I didn't know that.
I killed that for thirty years.
All right, it is five o'clock. Let's go to the Kittensass County Public Hospital District Number One meeting for May twenty second, twenty twenty five to order. First of all, do we have an approval of the agenda? Um, let me do something real quick, but I'd love to see if we have any changes to the agenda. Uh, I would like to, under Board Reports and Education, add a Board Travel Discussion for one of the Board Members. Uh, under a new one, under Old Business, I'd like to add the CEO Review, um, just to acknowledge that it's been completed. Uh, under New Business, Item C, I'd like to add, uh, the Wishia Governance Position. Uh, Terry's term is ending in September, so we just need to discuss what's next with that. And then Executive Session, just to be clear, um, when we reconvene, there will be a vote. It's anticipated there will be a vote taken on that, so I suggest those changes to the agenda. Any other changes?
The last change you mentioned before taking a vote?
Uh, the Governance Position with Wishia.
I second the approval of the agenda as a minister.
Okay, and who moved?
Bob.
Thanks, Bob, okay. Uh, motion by Bob, second by Matt, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 I too will vote aye, that motion passes. If you've had a chance to review the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion when ready. Move to a vote. Move by Matt, second by Bob, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 I too will vote aye, that motion passes. So we are on to number four, Public Comment and Announcements. Is there anyone here who would like to make a public comment or an announcement, either here or online? This is your opportunity. All right, seeing none, we will move forward, uh, on to number five. That brings us to the Safe Catch Awards, and I'm gonna hand that off to Matt to introduce and, uh, reveal the winners.
Right. Uh, I saw the time whenever I do this, this is like the favorite part of what I do here, because we get to see, uh, all the amazing work that are, um, that, uh, staff do here at KVH, and it's, uh, these, uh, this time, we're really impressed. I know the QI Council, we, we always talk about, go through the list, and it's always tough to decide. Uh, we were very impressed by the two winners who are joining us here today. Um, I'll just remind everyone what a Safe Catch is. A Safe Catch involves at least one of the following. Catch prevented event from reaching a patient or staff member. The catch prevented pain, delays in care, unnecessary costs, or workflow inefficiencies. The situation was high risk, correct? Potential for greater patient harms such as communication errors, surgical site infections, or falls. Catch led to frontline or just-in-time improvements. So I'll start with the Clinical Award, uh, which goes to Michelle Elzinga, uh, Physical Therapy Assistant with Home Health and Hospice. She was not, uh, nominated, uh, for recognizing a change in patient's condition or intervention, uh, nominated by Seth McDonald. Michelle, while visiting the patients in their home, noticed an infection in the patient's lower extremity wounds. The patient had an elevated heart rate and was shaky, and Michelle was concerned that the patient was septic. The patient was transported to the ED and subsequently confirmed septic and admitted for treatment. Michelle's attentiveness to the patient's condition possibly saved his life. Thank you very much. Take that. Then our non-clinical award, uh, this time is Noah Halter, Health Information Specialist with, uh, Health Information Management. And, uh, they were nominated for identifying medication sound-alike, look-alike error in investigating. And this was a nomination from Jason Adler, our CEO. Uh, Noah, Noah was reviewing a patient's record and discovered inconsistencies in the documentation and coding for a medication that was administered to the patient. Noah followed up with clinic staff, and it was discovered that the incorrect sound-alike, look-alike medication was ordered by the provider and administered as ordered to the patient. The provider was able to notify the patient of the error and had the patient returned for the correct medication. The identification of this issue has led to improvements in the EMR to prevent recurrence with some look-alike, sound-alike medications. Congratulations, Noah. Manny, you wanna tell them what, uh, what they've, what they've won?
Well, recognition at the board here, it's thank you for coming, so we can recognize you. Um, everyone who's nominated gets a pin, a charm for their badge, and, um, their banners put up in the units with these stories on them. Every person that's nominated has a story that you can read on our, on Ken, on our page, and, um, they get a hundred dollar gift cards for, for winning.
Thank you again for the, uh, great work you do for KVH, and thanks for coming to our meeting.
Do photo?
Yep, Eric.
Flowing time.
Yes.
So we will carry on with the agenda, will they step outside for a quick photo? So we're on Department Spotlight, Home Health Therapy Services, PT and OT, who wants to introduce?
Yes, I can, we have quite a few people here to support. Um, Seth McDonald is our physical therapist, and then Michelle Elzinga will also be presenting as soon as she comes back in. She's a physical therapy assistant. And then we have Dr. Scott Holtman and his wife, Kim, here to join us, so thank you so much for coming and letting us share your story. Who we got picked here?
I'm Heidi McDonald, married to Seth.
And then we have Ducky, she's our GAF for Home Health and Hospice.
Um, am I up?
We don't, Michelle does not have to be here.
If you wanna wait thirty seconds and see. Just take a catch up.
I'm Seth McDonald, I'm a, this, this, we're gonna all wait a minute while we're waiting, um, for home health. Michelle, one of my assistants. The unknown person say this, I speak a lot, Jason can back this up, and I speak fast, so I'll try my best. He spends no time in your camp.
No secrets of Seth.
He knows. It all comes out. We're ready, we'll go here. We kinda already explained this part, KVH Home Health Therapy, this is what we're presenting, it's a presentation of the KVH Board of Commissioners, done today on five twenty-two, twenty-five. If you haven't heard, we are pretty awesome, and I'm now talking about the home health as well as everybody. Um, our home health department team, yeah, consists of a clinical director, is Jackie Morris over there. Um, we also have a business manager, which is Michelle Sexton, sitting next to her, occupational skilled nursing, um, occupational therapy, therapy, speech therapy, a medical social worker, and a home health aide. Home health aide's present. Um, this is gonna be a brief story on Dr. Scott Holt, Dr. Scott Holt's injury and his recovery with KVH Home Health and, and just in general. Um, physical therapy, occupational therapy, and nursing were involved in Scott's care. PT visits were mostly completed by Michelle Elzinga. I, I oversaw the case and had my input, and, um, Michelle did, basically, most of the magic. Um, others involved, and Scott rehab, which were very important, his wife, Kim, who's already introduced, his father, who did a lot for him, especially equipment-wise. Um, he had some very skilled caregivers that did more than I'd ever expect from caregivers, and then many others were involved as well. Um, this is a copy of his GoFundMe page, um, I'm not gonna read this to you guys, just nerves and, and so on and so forth, but, um, give you guys some time, just a brief moment to read it. It was the initial GoFundMe page. Everybody tend to read that, if not, I'm sure it's available. Um, so we're just gonna go over the history of illness and injury. Um, at the time, Scott was a fifty-one-year-old male patient who suffered a spinal cord injury on November of twenty twenty-one while racing motorcycles in Southern California. Um, his diagnosis was a C-three, C-four incomplete central cord, spinal cord injury, um, and quadriplegia. He's been approximately six weeks in, in ICU as well as inpatient rehabilitation in California, um, prior to returning home. Um, when he came home, he came with home health, nursing, physical therapy, and occupational therapy orders. Just a reminder that twenty twenty-one, COVID was still been going pretty active. Um, you know, I did believe that led to less than optimal care and planning. Um, at his time of discharge, I spoke with the discharging hospital, and they were, you know, pretty open about that. Um, it, it just, most people at that time, you know, uh, this is just a little education, you know, and a lot of people don't know that there is incomplete spinal cord injury. Um, so, you know, incomplete spinal cord injury, what we're, we're able to get sensory and motor through the level of the lesion, um, versus complete, we get no sensory, no motor level lesion. Um, you know, Scott's injury is a little bit higher than this, but he wasn't incomplete. This is a scale that's kind, that's used in spinal cord injury, um, it's the age impairment scale, um, just showing that age A is a complete injury, no motor, no sensory, um, below level lesion. E is, is norm, is full return, full recovery. Um, the B through D is the incomplete status. Um, Scott came to us somewhere around a C, you know, with the prognosis to be a D to an um, central cord injury, um, just a little education there, central cord is the most common type of incomplete spinal cord injury. Um, and is characterized by more pronounced weakness in the arms and hands compared to the legs, with some associated sensory loss and bladder dysfunction. Um, just kind of a, even central cord, I think, kinda explains it. Station there. Initial status at the, our home health, we started, my evaluation on what we call the start of care. Um, we were, had diminished absence sensation and proprioception below the level of the lesion. Um, quadriplegia with his manual muscle testing grades coming in somewhere between a zero and two and five, and I'll explain that a little bit later here. Um, greater weakness in his right lower, um, and upper extremities, and greater weakness distally, um, meaning hands, um, than we have proximally in, in upper extremities and lower extremities. Start with his total to max assist, um, with bed mobility transfers and activities of daily living. He was a four-year lift transfer and, and doing some slide boards, quite a bit of assistance, non-ambulatory, and then maximal and total assist for he had, he had a power wheelchair, but Scott did not want one. Which was good. Um, then it wasn't testing, this is just some more educational stuff, just kind of what manual muscle testing is, zero to five, full, full strength, uh, no palpation of the muscle. This is a little incomplete, but you have some plus and minuses that we use. And then just kind of, uh, functional independence measure, one being total dependent or needing two persons, um, and then seven being complete independence. Picture of a four-year lift, this is how we started, and then a, and a slideboard transfer there. Um, Scott was with KB, with us, KVH Home Health Physical Therapy, me and Michelle, for about three years. Um, me, I'm a trained inpatient rehab therapist, thank God I have some experience of trauma one, as well as trauma two, a lot of experience in trauma two. Um, worked with a lot of spinal cord injuries in that time, um, but this was a very long time for me with same patient. Was quite concerned about, you know, making sure we're providing what he needs. Um, he kinda taught me, I feel comfortable in the early stages of rehab. Uh, um, there's got, this time, Scott did attend KVH outpatient for some aquatic therapy, and, um, also went to Craig Neuro Rehabilitation Hospital in Denver on two different occasions. About four weeks of aquatics, he went to a one-week neurological evaluation, um, at Craig's, and then returned months later for four weeks of outpatient, about that time. Um, thank gosh, they always said we're doing a good job. General timeframe of Scott's recovery, um, here we are, zero, two months. Um, you know, it's been in ICU and inpatient rehab in California, here we can, you know, some illustrations of the ICU, and then the rehab videos. Here we go to two to six months, um, we're starting to do some partial sit-to-stands and slideboard transfers, um, with maximal assist. His blood pressures were a bit of an issue in the beginning with, with low blood pressures, which can be very common. Um, we're improving his blood pressure seated balance, and we're getting increased motor, so strength and bilateral lower extremities end up for extremities. We still saw more strength proximally than we did distally. Um, we started to get him on the new step, where this was done early, um, sometimes horrid, as you can see a horse thing under there, sometimes we'd stand pivot, let's get his motor going, remember that one? And, uh, strapping his hands a beat to that. Some of the initial stages there. Six to twelve months, we started standing, um, started to get him up standing and static standing at a counter, as well as with the platform frontland walker. Um, you know, we don't have a lot of equipment home health, and we had to really think, how are we gonna get him up? And this was the first thing we did, how to really get him up, start working on standing, as well as pre-gate, it's just the initial phase of the gate, and then actually moving forward with gate. Um, he's a two-person max assist, is the picture illustrates here with Kim and Michelle. Initially, there was someone on the ground, uh, because we were stabilizing, blocking, and advancing lower extremities. Um, during this time, this is about the timeframe, Scott did go to aquatics, uh, which is a picture there, we were real lucky, we had a therapist in town that was, you know, in neuro rehab at the time. Um, going to twenty-four months, focus shifted to more quality of gate and mobility, um, building independence with all mobility, and transitioning off that platform walkers that we had the picture of less restricted devices, which we're gonna show shortly. Uh, we also started to work on stairs and steps and spinner van transfers, which is right here, which was important, Scott, we were scared when we started. There he is, Scott made a lot of equipment, here he put a Harbor Freight light gate, we'll see what a light gate, a medical light gate is shortly, but it was done with a winch and a climbing harness in his garage. I did talk about the above-ground pool as well, that he put into his shop. Um, just more general timeframe, here's Michelle working with him a four-wheel walker, just a progression off of the platform, and then do a heavy walker. We'll talk about heavy bar, which is a long bar that ran down his garage wall, and then a set of parallel bars that is, probably built them, right there. The twenty-four to thirty-six months, um, continue focused on increased quality of movement, you know, just, just building the quality of it, um, building the independence of it. During about that time, he start, you know, he kept getting more and more independent, but about that time, he was getting independent with just general mobility, ambulation, walk around his house, or walk a little bit outside his home. Um, you know, returning to normal lifestyle for Scott, which is kinda scary, but got a lot of, it was amazing to be a part of it. Again, more scary. Um, thirty-six months, the current status, um, we discharged him, you know, about the three-year mark, who's my best guess, um. Getting, he's continued, I, I've been encouraging people recently to go to Pacific Northwest University, I think Scott was one of the first ones that I encouraged, and he did go and worked with some new equipment, and just working with the students there that were really excited to work with Scott. I think that's a, you know, a great thing for our community, continuing to wa, wo, work hard and make great progress, as, as we see, we do have a video of him skiing that uploaded, but we've got a video of him skiing, that's what kinda triggered some of this, sent to me from Kim. Just amazing. This is equipment that we use for Scott's rehab, real quick, we talked about it all, new step, platform walker, of course, we did some neuro muscular electrostimulation on his own unit, um, four-wheel walkers, forearm crutches that we saw. You know, his home gym was really big for us, the above-ground pool, the homemade light gate, parallel bar, and the heavy from treatment, man, you know, without it, treadmill. Would have been very difficult. You know, this is a great hospital, I truly believe, I've worked for others, and I've worked for different departments and different areas in my, my profession, and, um, you know, I, I believe Scott, when he got where he got, you know, he, I don't think wheelchair got what he, I don't think we got where we got, and where he got himself in many communities, and without the resources that he had. This hospital allowed us to pretty much do inpatient rehab at Scott's home, which was five days a week, and, you know, sometimes three hours a day, I mean, we spent a lot of time in our, our department allowed us to do it, the hospital allowed us to do it. And without that, he would not have got what we got. Um, Scott's, you know, rehab gym played a vital role, um, in this recovery, without that equipment and space, uh, his recovery has definitely been delayed, and I doubt he would have reached the outcomes we see today. Um, you know, unfortunately, neurological rehabilitation facility staff and equipment are scarce, um, especially in rural areas, and this is across the country. Um, you know, in conclusion, Scott is an amazing person, he's an amazing person to work with, um, is, I've had a lot of patients, but he's by far my top. Uh, but, you know, again, just saying, you know, therapy equipment, staff, facilities are highly lacking, including in Washington, and in our county and surrounding counties. Scott has a hard time getting into certain things, because you have to be a King County resident, you have to be part of the UW hospital. You know, I'd love to see our community and county improve in these areas, of course, and be able to provide better services, uh, to these patients, because without him, we couldn't have done what we did, so. Scott's gonna now talk a little bit about his experience, new equipment and clinical studies in spinal cord injury, the neurological population within our county, in hopes of future neuro rehab. Anything else?
Um, I'll make it short and sweet, but, um, yeah, I, I kinda explained to, uh, Seth and Michelle, we chatted a little bit last night, and I think that, again, the biggest part of my rehab um, is that they showed up. I mean, that they were there for us, um, every day, you know, getting me out of bed, getting me on my feet, moving my limbs. Um, you, you know, that, that buy-in, um, you wouldn't have gotten it, I couldn't have gotten that in an outpatient setting. Um, and, and especially during COVID, uh, those, you know, that, that year, uh, being in an outpatient setting was very difficult. And then also just being in the condition that I was, um, having to be lifted into a chair, um, having to be transported in a, in a van to, to outpatient therapy. It, it, we wouldn't have gotten the results that we got, um, had I not had the resources of home health. Um, so I think, I mean, just kudos to home health and, and Seth and Michelle for everything they did. Um, I think the other, the other big thing that we have realized through this journey is that there's just not a lot out there as far as, uh, neuro rehab, especially in Washington. Um, Central Washington, it's a desert. Um, when we came from California, um, we made phone calls to Yakima, we made phone calls to Ellensburg, we made phone calls to Wenatchee. Uh, there were no facilities that were really willing to take me on. Um, it was like, no, he's, his, his degree of, um, you know, disability is too, too much for our facility, and so, um, that still remains, I, I think that, again, we have the, the, the hospital in, or the, the college in Yakima that is now doing their PT school, and they seem to be more neuro-focused. And they do have quite a bit of equipment, but again, it's, it's one of those things that, um, you're dealing, you're gonna be working with students, um, you're a volunteer. Uh, they're not really set up to be giving you PT on a regular basis for a long period of time, so, um, I think one of the, yeah, the, it's gonna be in a future slide, but I'll just skip forward, that, the, um, the closest facility that we have here in Washington is in Ritten. Um, so it's, uh, Pushing Boundaries, it's the name of the clinic, and it is the only neurorehabilitation clinic in, in Washington State, so. And as of two weeks ago, uh, they were on the verge of closing their doors, so, um, so again, it is a high need, uh, kind of a, probably very difficult area to, to take care of, yeah.
Can I just interrupt those, I wanna forget this question, so if it's a high need, why are they close to closing down, what's?
Again, it's a, it is not, they're not insurance-driven, it's private pay.
Mm-hmm.
And again, I, and I don't know the, the ins and outs of how they manage their services or anything like that, but, um, yeah, it's not a large facility.
I can speak a little bit to it, I mean, my knowledge is old in this, but I mean, neurorehabilitation is not high, um, compared with PT, especially when you're looking in an outpatient setting. Um, orthopedic patients, they could take three, four of them, you know, one-on-one therapists, one PTA, neurological rehab, you usually require one-on-one, um, the equipment is usually more expensive. They don't get reimbursed anything greater, you know, being a spinal cord injury versus being a total knee replacement, so it's hard. The, the profits are hard. Um, I was, had interest in opening an outpatient neuro clinic when I was just fresh out of school, and it's pretty much, no, no, don't do it, don't try, you don't make money.
And, and so this type of recovery is not covered by insurance, once you're stable and medicine's done what it can, or wha, what is it you're telling me?
Yeah, I mean, like, when I was on private pay insurance, yeah, you got twenty visits.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, but you're done.
It goes pretty quick, based on what you're describing, obviously.
Yeah, and so, you know, this is, this is a long-term, and so that pushing boundaries is a cash pay clinic. And so it is, you know, based on, you know, you're gonna pay a hundred fifty per visit, um, and then again, to drive, you know, three hours to do it, it's like, oh, I, I better figure this out on my own, so, um, so, yeah, so again, it is, it's just one of those things, and I think that, you know, as we look at, you know, statistically, um, you know, in, it's a one point nine percent of the US population has some type of paralysis, and, and if you put that to Kittitas County, I mean, we're pushing a thousand people in Kittitas County. Um, that could be dealing with some type of, of neurological paralysis, so, again, stroke, myelitis, um, you know, cervical injuries, uh, thoracic injuries, uh, there's all, you know, all different categories of that. But again, it's a, there is a group of people here in the county, um.
Just, and that Canyon View recently quit taking neurological involved patients in our community, um, you know, KVH is pretty much the one clinic now that'll take a neurologically involved patient, whether it's a stroke, or Parkinson's, or, or whatnot. Now, just the experience of clinicians, too, uh, your clinicians that do outpatient typically have orthopedic backgrounds, you know, your clinicians that are neural-based are usually in hospitals. I think that's the.
Yeah, so I think, um, just skip, going back to my, my stuff, uh, the equipment, I think that, again, um, one of the things that I've learned through this process is, I, I'm always kind of looking for what's the next best thing, how am I gonna, you know, use what I got? Um, helping to, to basically stimulate my body to do a little more, and there's quite a few really unique products out there today that would actually, I think, transfer into a home health setting. Um, if they had the support and they had the, the resources. Uh, things like this, uh, psionic sleeve, which is using, uh, electrical stimulation to stimulate the muscles, you know, in different parts of your leg. Um, this is something that just came out, and, uh, where before, we have lots of wires and, and stickers all over your body to try to stimulate certain parts of your body. This thing's pretty, pretty slick, pretty streamlined, it, um, just belches onto your leg, and, um, you're able to program it, to do, to stimulate all of the different muscles.
It is a functional in the S, meaning it, he wears it, he, the person wears it during gate processes, it stimulates the right muscles at the right stages of gate, and for improved gate patterns.
Yeah, and so, um, that's, you know, again, the technology there is pretty neat, the HyperShell is something that just came out also this year. Um, I just picked one of those up a few weeks ago, uh, again, just an exoskeleton, this is something that, when I came out of, uh, the hospitals in California, looking for an exoskeleton to try to get me moving again, and if I could get on my feet, could I use some, uh, robotics to try to move my legs to get me going again? Um, now it's available to the public, it's, it's out there for anyone, um, so it is, uh, again, pretty neat, it can be thrown in the little suitcase and in the back of the car, and, and again, it'll be something that, you know, Michelle could walk around the block with somebody, uh, if they were, uh, you know, needing to go for a walk, and it would provide, you know, thirty percent less, um, work for that patient. So, uh, just, again, pretty, pretty unique, um, technology, pretty fun, um. Yeah, that next slide.
You let me wear it the other day.
Oh, awesome. Yeah. Yeah, things like, um, um.
I think your name, I think that, what they were calling off.
That's okay. They just, little blaze pod, pods, and those are cool little electronic, um, lights that help with reaction times and things like that, and are, uh, all over the place as far as who they can benefit. Lightgate, uh, that was something that we were searching, Seth and I were searching for anybody that had a light gate to get me up on my feet and let me walk on a treadmill. Um, I made one out of a Harbor Freight, um, hoist in my garage, and put on a safety harness and, and made it work, and then, um, and it got me on my feet. But, uh, again, a light gate system is, um, something that is really, really valuable in a clinical setting. Uh, power plate is another thing, that one, it'd be harder for you to pull out of your car, it weighs a little more, but, uh, but that's, again, super unique. Uh, again, just, it does have wheels, yes, uh, but it, it, um, again, just vibration, um, stimulating, uh, lymphatic drainage, it, it helps with bone growth, it, uh, helps with, uh, sore muscles, yeah, so it's, yeah, so it's, uh, that one's been very valuable, I kinda came across that after going to Craig's Hospital in Denver. Um, yeah, and again, just great technology, really pretty, pretty neat, so, um. Oh, yeah, this is, yeah, this is the latest thing that came out, that, um, this, uh, RDX is a, a neuro transdermal stimulation, it's using elec, um, electrodes based, basically at my neck, right at the injury site. And they've done some studies here just recently that have, um, shown that, that was able, and ninety, ninety percent of the patients were able to improve their, their upper extremity function, or hand function. Um, and it's, um, something that
In six weeks.
Yeah, a six-week program, doing two hours a day for six weeks. Um, everybody, the ninety percent showed improvement, the, the, the big thing with this is it's, um, brand-new technology, it's just gone to market. They're selling the units now for, I think, forty thousand dollars apiece. Um, I tried to get into the UW, UW's not gonna take any patients outside of King County that aren't already established patients with UW. Um, so the, you know, the access to this is, is very limited, um. So it's just one of those things that, and again, there's, there's some really great technology, um, probably out there on the forefront, but access is, again, very limited, especially when you're talking about folks on the east side of the mountains, so, um, yeah.
It's got a pro, it's got a slide, I think.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it, I believe.
I think I, I wrapped it up, yeah.
I mean, yeah, and this is not, we're not here to, you know, I wanna make clear, it's not, it's nothing against our county, it's nothing against our hospital, this is a common problem across the United States, you know, it's just, we felt it would be good to, you know, just make it aware. You know, it's, it's, it's the common problem everywhere you'll go.
What, what approximately would it cost to furnish one of those facilities to do what you're talking about?
You're asking the wrong person.
Yeah.
Person exists in this room.
We do have a life gate in our budget for, uh, PT.
I mean, that would be my hope, is to get some more, you know, some, like, a light gate in our outpatient, would be a wonderful thing to have. Um, we, we've had two spinal cord injuries since discharging Scott, and, and the, um, one that I hope is not outpatient now, and, you know, and that piece of equipment would greatly benefit us, and it would allow us to get.
Just have make a couple for us.
Yeah, I think need to promote that as a homegrown solution, this is something that people will be replicating, to be able to do that at home is a. Milestone compared to having to come into the clinic to do it, yeah.
I actually have two um high rate lifts in the in the shop, um so in two different locations and.
So you and the engine can both take a ride at the same time?
Uh no, it's way, if I'm on the floor, you drag me over to one, if I treadmill, I'm. Um but no, I mean, yeah, they're, again, just, yeah, we've, we've done a lot of. Homegrown um equipment in my shop, and to the, at this point now, everybody comes into my shop and they're like, yeah. You're not gonna get any better than this, you know, you better just stay, stay home and keep, keep plugging away.
Hundred percent, it's what he has there, it's heartbeat.
No, for those who aren't as handy or don't have resources of people who are handy, that sort of thing, they cannot get into um. Programming King County unless they're residents, are people compelled to move there? Does that happen?
Not that I've been aware of.
They're just kinda out of luck.
Well, I mean, I I I'm gonna interrupt, cause a little bit, cause I mean, that's kinda, that was the big decision on our behalf as far as. Those first two years, um we contemplated moving, um knowing that we, if we wanted to get. That next level of care, we're trying to get, you know, the more neurological um attention. Um, you know, maybe we should go to Denver, uh that was, that was our first choice, I tried to get into UW for a year. And they wouldn't accept me, yeah. Yeah, we we couldn't get accepted at UW. Um so there was just wall after wall after wall of of not wanting to take us on as a patient. Um but Denver, they would take us on, we could be part of the program, if we moved to Denver and we could be part of the rehab program. Um you know, where would my rehab go? Uh but, you know, after spending four weeks there last year. They basically told me, go home and keep doing what you're doing, cause you're, you're right on track, so. Again, I, it does, there is a large portion of the. Community that, as far as spinal cord injury community that do relocate, to be closer to those types of services, so.
But some of the people that we work with, they just don't have the funds, you know, the ability, they're just stuck, you know, families and wives and jobs and. Spouses and don't have the, uh you know. Scott's really fortunate, but they don't have a gym, they live in their little apartment or their tiny little house, and that's all we have to work with, you know. I wish there was a little bit more rehab, uh neuro rehab that we, I can say, oh, well, we can get you, let's try to figure out how we can get you to a light gate. You know, and we'll work, you know, the therapist there, and let's see where we can get you, but there, there is just no, there's no resources. And it's all about getting them up and standing and walking, everyone on their feet, and the only way you can do that is with bodies. One person holding them and another person moving that leg, so that's two therapists for one person in one household.
But even things like standing frame, standing frame, and now they, they actually just saw a, uh an advertisement for a. Rolling, rolling.
Standing frame is a device that'll stand, uh even your complete injuries, um beneficial for the stand for the blood pressure maintenance, pressure relief. Um standing frame's a mechanical device that'll put someone in standing.
This this equipment, I mean, if you could get any, all the stuff that we did, created hope. That's all people really need is hope to motivate themselves to go one step further. And um it's, I mean, not everybody created equal, I mean, it can go both ways, I mean, Michelle was always. Super positive, happy, and just easy to work with on days that weren't really great days and. Equipment to think like goal oriented, to have something bigger and better to work towards, all that is just hope. And you, you need hope in this situation, and um. You guys help do that.
Great to be a part, for sure.
Yeah, it was a great surprise.
I have a little comment, um Scott and I were uh partners for a long time, um. But uh, you know, no one's gonna work harder than uh someone like Scott. That really, you know, he just, and works hard and wants results, and even if there's small results and. Um just like what Kim said, you know, just a small C or from him, from his situation, someone seeing. Someone with such a horrific trauma, but yet has gotten to this point when physician says, you're not gonna walk again. You know, you're gonna be bedridden, um and so it, it really, having that team, but you know, Scott's.
Oh, hundred percent, Scott is Scott, and you know, I'm really.
Good example for, but. Things that are really scary and a lot of unanswered questions, too.
Yeah.
Um I appreciate him coming here and sharing with us and.
Yeah, thanks for having us.
Thank you for drawing time restrictions.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you for sharing this story, very. For giving us the information.
No problem, thanks for listening.
All right, moving on, you're going to reports and dashboards, first, uh Chief Quality Officer, Mandy.
Yeah, good luck following.
Uh that's a really tough. My report is in the package. Uh starting on page fourteen, and um. I want to let you know that on our survey of patient safety, on patient safety culture, our response rate is currently at thirty two percent, which I think is. And, let's see, that's really all I wanted to add today.
I had a question.
Question, yeah.
So this uh surgical site infection following, or nose to toes treatment was not completed, the antibiotic, could you just? Explain that a little more, or sort of.
That's Anna's favorite terminology for that, but it's basically, uh maybe you, someone else wants to. Help me if I get it wrong, but there's uh like a swab you do in your nose, they give her bacteria in your nose and. A bath, a wash that you do to remove bacteria from your foot or kill it from your body, to help prevent there even being. Any bugs that could infect you on your own floor, opening your body up.
Yep.
Principle is reducing the number of potential organisms that naturally live on our skin prior to going under, under the knife.
Yeah.
There's still surgical scrub that is done at the the incision site.
And so the uh. Was the idea that the, cause I, I do this one, uh so you you uh. Is the idea that we didn't give the patient the right thing that he was supposed to, or he or she was supposed to scrub up with ahead of time, or what exactly?
Yes, there, there are patients that it's best practice to give it on all the time, and there are other surgical. Um cases where we've said, we think we should do it in these cases also, so. They may not have done it in that, in this particular case, they didn't, they didn't do it, but they've been working on a protocol to make more cases.
Okay, right.
I don't know if I answered your question.
No, that did, that did, thank you.
Was this a two-pronged situation, though, that the scrub wasn't completed and then was?
It's a whole, it's a whole bigger case that I don't think we can talk about here without um. It being identifiable, what happened in that particular case, but it was um. There was a, a lot of things going on, especially with the. It was not planned surgery. So it's a result of a trauma, and so that adds a whole different layer of complication.
Time is not on your side for planning and implementing, cause it's.
Well, and on top of that, what can happen with the mechanism of injury can also then contribute to your risk of infection.
Thank you.
And it may be one that's not even considered reportable to CDC or NHSN because. It may not have been preventable because of the situation, um but we wanna look at where, where we have opportunity to improve on. In preventing all of them, where we can.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Mandy? I'll ask one then, um on your note about adverse medication events, there was none for the month of March, so we running two months behind on that report?
The entire dashboard is from March. We, that's how we. For, and it's always too much behind, too much behind, some of that's because of coding with different charts.
Anything else you wanna call out on either?
I know you guys are usually curious about workplace violence events, so I'll just let, you know, we did get, that was even further behind previously, that was the one where. It was normally would have just said February, um so we're kinda catching up here, and for February, there were. Two uh workplace violence events, one was in home health and hospice, um and one was a staff staff. Uh they were both behavior, not uh physical violence, and then in March, we had five. Workplace violence events, three of which were patient or visitor on staff, and two were staff on staff. They were all um verbal incidents as well. One of those patients in March was the um a repeat from February, too, of the person involved.
Can you uh, can you look at page, my page twenty one, uh cardiology, for example?
Oh, yeah, patient satisfaction, yes.
And so um I just wanted you to walk me through how to read this, this sort of graph with these who are satisfaction ones.
So um one of the things that happened with the clinic separation project with I T. So before, we didn't have cardiology or dermatology separated out from the other clinics, they were all lumped in with the primary care clinics they're part of. So one reason why there's no data there is we couldn't see the difference between the patients before, but if you're looking at the cardiology graph. The um. The blue dot is the question about your overall satisfaction with the service. Uh u- usually it's a scale of one or zero to ten, and then the red is the uh willingness to recommend. And what the box, the dot is on the number of patients, the percent of patients who gave us a top box to support. So on the question, zero to ten, would you rate that facility? Uh the top box answers are a nine and a ten, on the uh willingness to recommend, it's only. Uh definitely will recommend is the only top box, there's four responses, and only that one is the top box. So in this case, we had um the total respondents, there were four patients surveyed in that quarter. And part of that looks that low, it because of when the separation happened, when surveys went out, right? Um and and in some areas, it's because there's just low volume of patients too, like the inpatient side or home health and hospice. Those are small numbers who are being discharged from that service at the time, um and then the, the zeros there. Look, it's not really helpful to look at those ones because they're meeting the goal, but let's say.
You wanna go to a different one that, that's some more data points?
Well, our, if you go to like the emergency department, so that's on page twenty. Um there were a hundred seventy six patients that were surveyed in the first quarter of twenty twenty five. And to meet our goal of sev- of more than seven seventy five percent or more that gave us a top box response. We would need eleven more patients to give us a nine or a ten, or twenty four more patients to give us the definitely willing to recommend. So that's how these were originally set up, I think that there is the desire to do some more intentional work around. Patient satisfaction and these dashboards and what we're looking at and what individual areas are looking at. Right now, this is what, how we've measured it and shared it at the board for a long time, but. We haven't had the opportunity yet to start working on, how do we look at this differently? Think that may have come up on a sticky note for two or three at the uh strate- strategy session.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Well, I'll say one more thing about it, I think one of the reasons that Julie and I originally um worked on that, what is that? That thing on the bottom, the overall and recommend, it was like, if you look at family birthing, like, you just need one more person, right? To say they definitely recommend us, like, and and thought that that would be encouraging to staff, like. If you could get one more of your patients to feel that passionately about their care. And so it was kind of a way to think about it in a tangible way, like as far as your patients that you take, and and the difference you might make.
But people are not required to fill this out.
No, patients are not required, no.
Cause I tend to think people who are irritated tend to take more time filling something out than people who are happy.
We saw that with um when we implemented Ratorade, right, we weren't. Uh initiating a response from people, it was definitely more negative, but I do think you tend to see.
Yeah.
But you see that with our um care service too, complaints and compliments.
All right, thank you, anything else?
No, not today.
Sure.
I'm good for right now, must get more questions.
Uh if there's no more questions for Mandy, we will move on, so uh up next, we have Chief Executive Officer Jason.
Thank you, my report there on page twenty four discovered a few things that that occurred through the month of um. April, so May first, we did go live with the Royal Physician Group's Compass product, so that expands our telehealth. Consults to inpatients or observation patients for infectious disease, cardiology, and. Will be pathology, I'm not certain what pathology is live, but that went really well, that rollout, so excited to have access to that. Additional level of care for our admitted patients, uh that's one of Royal Physician Group's products, so it works seamless with our hospitalers. And they are also, or will be likely using that at other facilities too, so just a real streamlined service for, for that group. Uh we welcome Joel Reiner to the cardiology group with Dr. Nyak, so the two of them are. Both teaming up our cardiology program and we're seeing a good number of patients already, so they're just hitting ground running. It's just an awesome team to work with, if you haven't had the opportunity to meet them. Uh hopefully you don't have freedom as a patient, but you do, they're amazing. Uh and then we also have a cardiology nurse that has worked with those two for some years as well, so. We have a really strong cardiology team, really exciting position to be in, and they are very excited to expand our. Access to our community and and beyond through some future tele services as well, in the gold part of cardiology. Uh access to care, Stacy Bry mentioned, but they hit a record clinic visits in the month of April, eight thousand eight hundred and twenty. Uh rider, this this visits and telehealth providers, but it doesn't include nurse visits, so. We probably have another two thousand nurses on top of that as well, so just a, on the traffic here, clinics and amazing care. So pretty exciting to see those, those records, we do anticipate a little bit of a. Little bit slower in the coming months with some extended leaves and onboarding, offboarding of providers, but. They should still remain relatively stable at these, these numbers. Uh recruitment retention, Janine's been just shaking things up with their reading team, so. We've had a lot of success with with recruiting both providers and staff, so it goes to our H R team. Um and really, everybody that helps in that recruiting process, when they tour physicians through and they walk through the surgery and they're greeted and we have nice space, that's just. Really pleasant and exciting to to see all that unfold. Uh construction, expansion projects done, getting close to finishing up the ortho project, that would be a clinic project, that should be done. The middle of June, they'll be doing a little bit of other work in the general surgery clinic, so there'll be some likely um movement. movement, playing musical chairs for a little bit while they wrap up that project, but really excited to get ortho back to the hospital campus here. And we are recruiting for an additional APC now. You might recall, we were recruiting for two additional APCs when we got Shane and then we held for a little bit until we got more space because the the three in the small clinic they're in right now is tight and they're all busy. So it's pretty awesome to see our, our volumes are increasing. Um, Midtown Depot, Rhonda's really taking the lead on that and the um design work that we've been um consulting with the owner on. So it's really exciting to see um a little bit more footprint up and we want to serve their therapy needs up there. And let's say stuff, we found the big one is SNAP funding, still feeling some hope. Feels feels positive that we'll get the SNAP funding for this year. So hopefully it comes through. I'm optimistic here. A little less, so yeah. Uh, it's about two million dollars. We hope to see um come through that we realized last year and we're hoping this will get for this year as well. And then lastly, just shout out to Laura and everybody that attended KPH Foundation Dinner. It was not a record in total, but it was a record um total that we collected or was donated on a per attendee basis. So we had a pretty good shot. So it was a really great event, great turnout and and pretty enjoyable night to reflect on KPH.
All right, any questions? Uh, the event was well done. It was comfortable, uh seating arrangements, the food, the location, number of people, it was well, really well done.
Yes.
Did good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She said, I think she's ready for.
Fasten on. I did very little, helped sell some seats. It was awesome. We had a sold out event and and really good donations. I think the community really supports our, our services and I think I enjoyed attending.
Excellent. Thank you. Anything else for Jason?
And I almost got a lead back here.
It still could be negotiated. All right, thank you. Um, so on to Chief of the HR, Janine.
Uh, so uh, my report is on page twenty-five and you can see the stats um remain pretty stable. Uh, turnover rates are nice and low, which we like to see continues um continues to be low. One of the, the reasons for the amount of turnover, but the low turnover rate is um that we have a large percentage of our workforce that's per diem. Um, and we don't include those in the turnover rates because they are kind of casual um coming and going, but that um helps to kind of stabilize us along the way. Um, one of the things that I did want to call out is we had our DOH survey with home health and hospice. And one of the things in the volunteer report, um, when we were going through that uh health survey, I wasn't here at the time that we took over the volunteer program, but I understand they had virtually no notice um when helping hands closed. And the DOH survey um was very complimentary of the work that Rhonda and Kyle did to put that together. Um, so that was a, a a really um enjoyable part of the survey. You don't always get enjoyable surveys. So I just really wanted to call attention to that. I thought it was pretty remarkable considering they had virtually no notice to get that up and running. Um, so shout out to Rhonda and and Kyle for their work on that. Um, and then we have, we're still optimizing um our recruitment and retention software through smart recruiters will be um as we implement the HRIS program, we're going to look at ways to integrate and automate um a lot of those processes. We also have a demo for physician recruitment. So we're doing a restructure with the physician room side of things. Help broaden um the bench for physician recruitment. Right now, we just have one individual um, uh, Kat, Rhonda, who is doing a wonderful job, but um the volume of physician recruitment does, it's, she's maxed out um in terms of the benchmark. And so what we wanted to do was to see can we automate a little bit more, get the systems to work better for it, and then have Heather uh take on and begin to learn the physician recruitment piece. Um, and in that way, we have a little bit deeper bench uh for physician recruitment. If someone's out on PTO or something like that, we can kind of move the chess pieces around a little bit. There's a new software that we're demoing that will help to um organize the, the entire life cycle of recruitment, onboarding, and then potentially contract management after that. Um, so it will connect the dots between credentialing, contracts, um IT, uh onboarding, um Dr. Thomas, Jason, myself, uh, practice managers, Stacy, all of us will have access to that dashboard to see where any candidate is at in the life cycle. You can set up automated uh alerts to make sure that we stay on track and don't miss something. If something in the life cycle changes or updates, it will automatically alert everyone involved so that you're not doing ten emails and oops, I forgot to let someone know that there was a change in the start date or we got a, a, a hit on maybe the background check or something like that that we cause us to pause. Um, so it's a way to just organize the data and communicate quickly and consistently. Uh, the other thing that it'll do is it will actually demonstrate the amount of volume that goes into um physician recruitment. It is very different. Um, it is a little bit more labor intensive. It's a little bit more costierges. Um, so it'll help us again, just kind of organize and really get a sense of what is it costing us every time that we do this? Um, so that we can make sure we're getting the most bang for our buck. And if we need to redirect, um, it'll, it'll give us the data to be able to do that. So and and make it pretty transparent for us to do, and then we can kind of trend over time. So very excited about that. Um, so that is probably the latest and greatest from page already.
Any question?
This summary here, it says one action needed by you. Is, is that you or is that us? Um, we're on page thirty. It looks like maybe a screen got this.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So that is just an example. That's an example of the dashboard um that when we set up the leaves, for example, um there's sixty-two leaves and it's just, it's a lot to try to figure out where each individual employee is in their leave process and try to communicate um that to the managers. That's one of the reasons why we wanted this um family source software to help us kind of organize the data and tell us what to do. So that is an example of when Annie is going in. Um, she knows to check the, she's got the leaves ending. She better double check with the manager and make sure they've got a plan. She's double checking with the employee. Hey, um, are you still on track for this? Um, the actions needed by her is probably going to alert her and the manager, hey, we don't have a physician certification for this person to return. They were approved for their leave through, let's say, uh, June first. We're, we don't have the release from the doctor yet. So we need, we need someone to kind of ping, ping the employee and ping the doctor a little bit. So it's just a way to kind of keep us on track and keep the flow moving. So no, this isn't for you guys. It's just a.
What a cool tracking program.
Pardon?
What a cool tracking program.
It's, it's helpful. Yeah, we're still working through the bugs a little bit. Um, we didn't realize that in the emails that we were getting, um, there was you know, helpful little PDFs on, on, you know, what you can do and how you can, and how you can um refer to an EAP and all the little helpful things, but it, you know, too many alerts to get alert fatigue, right? It gets to be a little bit much. So kind of tweaking the process a little bit um to, to help just kind of streamline us, keep us focused on the things that we need to know, educate where we need to, but maybe we don't need all the alerts all the time. So we're still kind of working the bugs out from now, but.
Uh, I have a quick question about uh cardiovascular doc, uh, it's pending or in progress where, that's on page thirty-one. It's, we mentioned that in cats, so. That's update. I'm just curious where we are in that. What in progress means with regard to that particular?
Okay, so if it's in progress, you would have, it would be um either we're waiting on uh an offer letter to be signed, or we would be waiting for a contract to be worked through and signed.
Hmm.
Um, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're in active negotiations about the specific and specifics of the offer and the program development that will uh surround that. So we're sort of pre-contract, but uh very serious uh discussed with this.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, so next we're up to uh Wayne, uh Chief Facility. Now he's not here, I'll see him online. I mean.
Yeah, I, I, I told you I needed to be excused this evening. Um, I just give a quick rundown on the objects earlier, but uh, uh, you know, just one thing that came up today is we do have verbal approval from Department Health for operating the lower room four, and we expect to have the paperwork next week for that. There was confusion in that size of the project dollar wise and the fees that they charged us. So a real technical thing up there, but otherwise that project is almost, almost all the way completed. Um, they are working through there, installing all the new anesthesia booms. Uh, I don't know that they, or, or the, yeah, it says May twenty-third, so totally complete good. It's going well. Yep. If you have questions, I can probably answer them. Oh.
Where is carpet being put in the hospital?
Um, where are you looking at?
It's, uh, isn't it, isn't it on this one here on page?
The eighteen, if we don't.
That's under the orthopedics. Not totally sure exactly. I don't think that, the first floor of the Mac will be completely redone.
Yeah, we're removing the carpet in the first floor of the Mac at rapid access, the dermatology area in the back hallway. But I know the orthopedic clinic is having carpet in like the bullpen area and then the waiting area.
It looks like this is specifically talking about orthopedics, the way it's kind of written.
Okay, that's the alright, that's concerning. It's like carpet could get very dirty. Uh, that's why uh a lot of, although we got carpet in here.
Yeah, we're pretty full up with the carpet.
Yeah, but I know a pair of to clean this carpet certainly well.
Most of the first floor of the Mac will be redone.
Is carpet potentially strategic in the bullpen just for sound? So it doesn't echo and absorbs that.
Yeah, we'll also have a large amount of tree pruning that'll be done on the hospital campus and at all the houses over the next month. Expect to see some trees getting trimmed, air cuts. There are some of them that will definitely go there, pushing against power lines and houses and disrupting the roofs, attracting spiders.
Yeah, plus we're, we're really lucky that they didn't get covered up with somebody know that they fell over on somebody.
Yeah, yeah, yes, that did lighten them a little.
What the CEO has to think about spiders and trees.
It's one thing.
One of them. Page, page thirty-three near the bottom of the text, construction equals January through May. I assume that should be twenty twenty-six, not twenty twenty-five.
Yes, um.
Those to go back in time, yeah.
That's a good one.
Anything else for Wayne's department? Any questions or?
Radio Hill, we're still, we're just working through the parking lot with KDA and then we're working on the RFQ stuff for the interior renovation. So that ends on the thirtieth and we'll evaluate those applicants for the interior.
All right, you good?
Good.
Nothing else? We will move on to operations. Chief Nursing Officer, Deb Callens.
Hello, my report starts on page thirty-four. Um, the only thing I would add, just globally, we've been very busy um pretty consistently now, uh at least averaging ten in med surge. So that's been great. We've been busy and we've been able to accept patients, which is also.
Is this connected to the expansion being finished and have a little bit more room or more, or is it separate?
I wish I could say yes, but no. Um, I, our volumes in that area have been high during construction, so just not anticipating that impacting. I think our ability to accept has gotten somewhat improved with our staffing. Although we are still struggling with call offs, et cetera, it's not, we're more stable than we were six months ago when I first came. Um, so that's been better, working our staffing matrix and trying, trying to right-size the ability to staff our units at minimum staffing versus maximum staffing. And that's actually starting to show some improvement. So that, that in conjunction with work with the ED and the house supes and trying to make sure that we're operationalizing our throughput. And so there'll be a lot more, as I report out in the next six months, on what we're doing to improve patient flow through the hospital. We did just hire a patient care services manager who will be overseeing the hospital supervisors, social services and case management. And that role will be specifically working on patient flow and like the stay um avoidable days, some of those metrics that are super important so that it's more about making sure we can take more patients, um more bums in the bed is what I like to say, um with the same amount of staff and resources. So that's coming. Um, one of the things I think that's been really great is working with KBFR, Jason and Rhonda and I, Johnny Coles is around just the three of us, I suppose, right? Um, we've been really trying to work with KBFR and um Hospital District Two on our transports. And I know that came up at the last um meeting. And I think um in this discussion, we've really found a way to collaborate. And so they have, KBFR has created a daily huddle. And that huddle's been awesome as far as us communicating and understanding who's doing what. We have a lot more work to do with them, but I think we're in a better place than we were a month ago. So that work, the ED gets on that call every morning along with um medical's team. Oh, sorry, I said wrong.
Medical.
Okay, sorry. I'm trying to get this hospital district thing down. Um, and so those are things I, I'll continue to report out as we improve. Um, so that that's what I'd be anticipating that the, the rest of this year is seeing patient throughput or transports, just being able to communicate better on where we're at, what we're doing with our patient flow. All right, next week, um, we will have a new um end of shift huddle forum coming through from the hospital supervisors that will show our current state, our current census, what's happened in the last twelve hours. So we're communicating that out to leadership team saying here's what's happened within the hospital. So, you know, we don't always know, right? It's kind of word of mouth right now. So I'm really excited about that. That's our first start to this new communication and collaboration. Guys, have any questions for me?
Any questions?
All right.
I just give Deb a shout out for, because she's only been here five months now. And you really identified a lot of opportunities early on and a lot of that's just around collaboration. And then not turning into patient flow. So the better communicated, the better everybody's informed of that, better the patient flow is. And then the more people are comfortable or ready to accept patients. Um, and then with the staffing, assignments and staffing matrix, what you presented to the staff, and they just really have accepted that change. And they're partnered with you alongside it. It could have been demonstrated, could have, they could have taken it pretty native, but they didn't. They took it with a lot of trust and consent. So, yeah, this is all really good and a lot of really intentional effort that's part. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
All right, up next, we have Chief Counsel Larry.
Yeah, my report's on page thirty-five and thirty-six. And um I had put in there that we are anticipating a manufacturer's delay for extra equipment at the ortho clinic, and we do have that delay. So it'll probably be sometime in June when we get it. Um, for home based primary care, we ended up with six inmate applicants and we have finished our interviews and are doing reference checking. So we're really excited. Hopefully to get somebody stable in that program for us. And.
And how many out of the six would you accept if?
Three.
Three?
Mm-hmm. So half of them would be really wonderful. So if we get more openings, maybe we can hire more.
Oh.
Um, yeah, and that's pretty much all I have for today. Unless you have questions.
Question? Uh, the imaging inspections seem to have went well.
It did. And it was, it's really nice to, like I put in here about Coulter just being a new move and how he has just grown into his role and did a wonderful job. So that's really great to see the frontline staff have an opportunity to excel. She hired again, Stacy.
And uh, the, the midtown uh in Clayom, you're happy with where we're at, where it's progressing and it's going to be a good space for us.
It's going to be beautiful. Really excited about that.
Good. Excellent. Thank you. Anything else? All right, thank you. So Stacy, Chief of Clinic Operations.
Yes, my report's on thirty-seven. I just want to talk real quickly about the clinic system support coordinator role. Um, this role has originally started as a staffing role. The next time we filled it, it became one of administrative assistant. And this last time we made it clinic system support coordinator. Besides having a really long title, what this is, is really grooming the next clinic manager. And this worked really well for us. We had two managers out on leave. She was able to step in and help fill one of those spots. And then with Johnica's move. And then with Jonika's move, we moved Sydney into a clinic manager role. So what's exciting is we posted her position, we had forty nine applicants and only six were external. So a lot of interest, forty nine and six are external. So we were able to take that list and get it down to these people for interviews, so we're still in interviews, we've interviewed about half of them. We hope to have a decision probably either late next week or early the week following. But it's just amazing to see that career growth and development happen inside the organization, it's an exciting story.
Can you say, if not, that's okay, how many of those six are interned?
Five.
Thank you.
Someone's gonna lose a good employee.
Yes, someone's gonna lose a good employee. And then, uh, medical assistant apprenticeship program, once again, we posted for three positions. This time around, we only have fourteen applicants, which is really low for us. Um, a good mix of internal and external candidates. We're probably going to interview at least two to three. Once again, my struggle is preceptors, getting our current MAs to want to commit to a year of precept. We're working on that, we've got three who are potentially interested, um, we just got to figure out how to make it work. So, uh, beyond that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Steve? Under dermatology, you've got Will starting in July sixteenth, Kelly leaving June thirteenth, is that leaving us a void or is that?
That will leave us with only one APC endometrium.
I guess that's a few weeks.
And I think that one has maybe a week of vacation.
Okay.
So we might have a week for that. But we are excited to get Will and get him set up. Sad to see him lose an FME, talk about a range of emotions.
Yeah.
Yeah, you got derm, oh, that what I did in primary care.
Uh, and orthopedics remodels coming along?
Orthopedics is coming along, the space looks great, we're able to walk through colored walls, things are getting painted, um. They were really looking forward to the move and now with GSV getting to go in first and kind of breaking the clinic. They're a little bit upset over that, they'll get over it, it'll be all, all okay.
Name of new windows.
Yes, and the name of new windows, we really felt, the, the other option was we could section off the windows. And do them one by one, but it is every window in that building and it would take them two to three days to do each one.
Does this seem cleaner this way?
Cleaner this way, it's disruptive for staff, it's disruptive for patients and it's noisy.
Yeah.
It really is noisy when you're trying to run it. So, Jonika and I felt, we'll just move them all out, you get. Two, they said probably two to three weeks to do all the replacement and then they get to my bucket.
Uh, anything on your dashboard you need to point out?
Cardiology is still struggling, but you know, we've got Joel on board, we're looking at some telehealth options for that clinic and. I think things are going well, um, if you look at the teams, the green team is a smaller team, it's Dr. MS. With two APCs, so it makes sense that they've seen a little longer time to come in and, and get that next third available. Otherwise, nothing else stands out, FMCE is working on getting those days down, Dr. Folkers has just jumped in and. Been amazing up there to really help with those.
Excellent, thank you, anything else you'd like to share on this today?
No.
Any other questions?
I make comment back, uh, to, uh.
You're gonna make it to her to me for this?
I, I just wanted to, uh, make a comment back to Rhonda.
Oh, please, yeah, go ahead.
Can I do it?
Yes, please.
Uh, Rhonda, I had a, a couple of people in our community that were a little upset. Uh, they had a, the, the MRI and they were sent down to Yakima to get it, they didn't have it done here. Uh, but I had a couple of other people tell me they really liked having it here. And then, uh, I also had another person that needed a mammogram. And, uh, we do it here a lot and they were also scheduled down to Yakima. So it was two different doctors that sent them down to Yakima and I was concerned that they were transferred down to Yakima. For those, uh, for those, uh, two, uh, imaging things and, uh, they weren't done here. Uh, and they were really upset about it and they know I'm, uh, a commissioner and I've been taking care of healthcare here. Since I've been here for about forty years, uh, and so, uh, a lot of them know who I am. And, uh, they, they, uh, know I'm a commissioner and they talked to me, uh, a lot of times when I'm in. Grocery stores and stuff like that, so I just wa- wanted to, to know if you think, uh. People are being transferred down to Yakima for MRIs and mammograms.
I would, um, encourage you to ask them to fill out a care and service report and turn that into quality and then quality can. Investigate with the patient and find out the details, um, there, we don't do every MRI here. We have a wonderful MRI service, but there are some exams that we don't do. And then for mammography, um, a lot of women, it's really good for them to stay consistent from where they've had their prior mammograms and so if they've had. Prior in Yakima, then they, they may want to continue there, um, so they could something like that, but without knowing the particulars. I, I can't speculate, but I would just encourage them to do a care and service with quality.
Well, I did tell them how to do that.
Right, that's great.
You should get that, uh, comment if they still want to fill it out. Uh, because that's what I was telling them about, but.
You can also reach out to folks if you give, if you.
That's one thing that a lot of people have, uh, I've heard some of the other commissioners talk about people being upset about transfers.
Would you be willing to provide their names privately, Mandy, and she can reach out to them?
Uh, no, I'm not gonna, so I'm sorry, I'm not gonna tell you their names.
That's okay, you should ask them. But that's one thing you can offer to people is that we can reach out to them, so they don't have to fill out.
I told them that I.
Yeah.
I could, uh, uh, have somebody contact them here and I told them how it felt, the paperwork, so I'm hoping you'll get the paperwork. Uh, the complaint. And you can do it, but I, I just thought, uh, since this is a, a public meeting, uh, that comment should be, uh, talked about. Because since I've been taking care of healthcare here for about forty years, uh, I'm really happy to be a commissioner. And it's, uh, a really good thing to do, uh, to make sure that healthcare here is still really good.
It sounds like for this particular situation, there's a lot of unknowns and so we have a process to look into. So hopefully you'll encourage them to reach out, we can find out what's really going on, but appreciate your comments, anything else?
Okay, well, when I, I see them again, I, I'll, I'll make sure that they filled out the paperwork. And if not, I'll, I'll make sure that they let me write their name down and their phone number and then, uh, I'll let, I'll let Mandy know about it.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we are to medical staff and Dr. Beard, I don't see him here online, is it falling to you tonight?
We'll happily. Taking an opportunity to spend some time with himself.
Excellent.
So, uh, the medical executive committee met on May thirteen and, uh, voted in to, um. Recommend approval of both initial appointment and reappointment privileges for the candidates in your packet. Uh, there were no concerns or reservations expressed.
For that now? Please. Okay, I note that we approve that.
All second.
Okay, motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor of, uh, proving this month's credential files, say aye.
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 I too will vote aye, that motion passes. Thank you, and now, Dr. Thomas, Chief Medical Officer, report.
On page, uh, forty, if you're back, that you will find my report, I have no, uh, specific updates other than to, uh, mention in response to the. Previous points, uh, that I think the word is getting out about our magnificent MR machine and we've had a number of patients both. Happy with their scans, uh, as well as surgeons from outside of the institution, uh, enthusiastic about the quality of the images that they're getting, so. Quite grateful for the, the work that word has done in order to bring that imaging system into our.
Can you tell us, um, Dr. Smolzer's deployment?
Yeah.
How, how will that affect things for us?
Uh, not, not significantly, he has delegated appropriately to members of his staff, um, and he is. Uh, working very hard to stay in touch electronically while he's on his deployment, it is a short term deployment. For training purposes, yes.
Not eighteen months or?
Nope, no, I, I don't have a specific timeline, but it's a matter of a couple of weeks.
Oh, okay, great.
I know, since Dr. Beard is here, I'll say this to you, I know that you know how, how good a job Shannon Carlson does, uh, with the NBC, but, uh. Just pass along my thanks, she's always, uh, on top of everything with that, always answers my question very promptly and everything, so anyway.
And she always does it with a smile, too.
Yeah.
Nice, she, she works very hard behind the scenes, so.
I appreciate it and concur with your extremely, that kind of words, she's a rock star.
Uh, any, any questions for Dr. Thomas? Uh, I was just gonna say, um, on page forty one, your third bullet point, the current dual role model. That paragraph, I was just gonna have, if you could take a moment, just explain even a little bit more what that really means, what's happening and it sounds like you're working on solutions for it.
Well, the, uh, current model that we have is that OB GYN provides us with, uh, OB GYN every day of the year, so. We have three hundred sixty five days of coverage from them, um, in instances where they are not available to, uh. Both see patients in the clinic and cover patients in the hospital, whether it be surgical patients or pediatric patients, Rob Wagonak, uh, the. Medical Director of Family Birthing Place fills in for in both capacities, so he's covering, uh, some of their nighttime and, uh, overnight. Uh, hall responsibilities so that they can get a good night's rest prior to their operative days, which allows them to perform at a high level quality when, uh, they have OR block time. And we're working to, um, try to both optimize the, the care that, um, they are delivering, they are, uh, here and available. But also make sure that we're not pulling Robin too many different directions.
Cover all this, okay.
It's a unique, uh, challenge, which I think we're doing a great job of navigating.
And is this sort of issue, it's, it's connected to how, how small we are, we just don't have extra bodies to.
Much so.
To fill in, so he has to kind of do it all in this case.
Exactly, and to that point, we're, we're building out the clinic staff with, uh, two new postings for APCs in that clinic and. We're very enthusiastic about the response we've had to those postings so far, so we anticipate being upstaffed in the clinic space and allowing Rob to be a little bit more. Flexible between those two roles.
Excellent, thank you. Anything else for us?
Can you explain the last bullet point there about the shift to OBD model?
Uh, yes, so the OBD model essentially is a more developed, more of a medical triage, so currently we have. Uh, our patients come in, uh, with numerous complaints, whether they be related to their obstetrical care. Or unrelated but potentially complicating their obstetric care, they're evaluated in a triage bay, uh, within a family birthing place and. Uh, as they receive all of their, um, emergent care from the obstetrician who's on call. Uh, the OBD model is a more formalized version of that exact same model and it's, um, a, uh, essentially a quality improvement initiative. The family birth and places are taken right now.
Great. Anything else? Thank you, Thomas.
My pleasure, thank you.
All right, moving on to, uh, Chief Financial Officer, Jennifer Reed.
Good evening, my report starts on page two and just a couple of things to point out, um. We are exceeding our budget, two point eight billion dollars and, um, same with the contractual allowance, but that is. Sitting at forty eight percent, so that's still really conservative, so. So we'll probably be looking at that at some point, so it's just, no, we're really conservative in our net revenue numbers.
And with this, uh, exceeding the budget kind of accumulating month after month, will we do a little budget adjustment possibly near the end of the year, sometimes we. We do a document that increases the budget.
Yeah, so we're only authorized this and, uh, total for expenses, so when revenue is running higher, services are higher, usually our expenses. And above the budget, so probably usually I'll come back and ask for additional. Target is? Yeah, all that rest spending, yep.
Uh, one correction on the operating and non-operating. It says the month was three ninety five thousand, but actually that number is three eighty three thousand and outperforming budget by. Six hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. Not entirely sure where that came from, so. My apologies for that, uh, just point out that the accounts receivable, um, billing team and collecting team, they're doing a great. Job and trying to reduce those accounts receivable, really working on the front end on our discharge, not final bill and then on the back end. Not letting things age out, um, and our next little push will be self pay. Elections. And then, um, just James working hard, uh, getting the audit finished up, that's in its final review. And they'll be presenting next month at the meeting. House report is also in its final review and that should be issuing, it's due on the thirty first and we'll be done in plenty of time for that. And that's really all I have to point out, unless you have questions.
I, uh, I didn't, I don't think I said this last time, but I really liked the way you set up your reports. It's very, I find it very readable.
Big improvement?
Big improvement over the last. But, uh, anyway, this, I find this very clear and I appreciate it.
He's talking to you personally, they like bold letters.
Yeah. That's right.
And simple.
We don't all get a couple of days off during the week, we need to focus.
Any, uh, anything else you want to point out? Any questions on the financial case?
Uh, I just wanted to make another comment about the, uh, the accounts receivable, uh. We're still doing a really good job, uh, cause, uh, last, last year and this May, it took us seventy two. And now we've dropped down to sixty, so we get the money back, uh, a lot better now and then we can, uh, invest it and do a lot of other things. So, uh, we're gonna get a few more buckaroos out of it.
We're working on getting that, getting the buckaroo in the door.
Yeah, well, uh, I, I knew about the account receivable, several other hospitals. This is about what they've been doing now, uh, so it's only close to two months before we get the money back. We set up almost, uh, close to three months.
Yep, and that's kind of a sweet spot, cause once you get more, uh, quicker than that, you're just writing it off, so. I think, um, sixty days is a real nice, I used to say.
I know you put a real concerted effort to get that, that down and it seems to have real paid off.
Thank you. And, uh.
Yeah, that wasn't mine.
When did you start?
They were February, right?
Snow's in February, fifty eight days. So we have some notes maturing this year, we'll just.
Yep.
Flip them back into higher interest rates.
So, yeah, we're trying to set it up where our maturity comes, same time we owe some debt, um, whether we use it or not is.
At least it's our option. Very good, any other questions for Jennifer?
Just like to continue to note Medicare Advantage is still running one point two percent lower than it was last year, so that's a. Absolute win. Campaign last year, started to educate the community of the differences between Medicare and Medicare Advantage. Goals is to not increase, we've been trending, very steep increases year over year, so to see it go down is a big plus. Hopefully it holds.
Yeah, I've seen some speeches recently on Capitol Hill where they're expressing that this is a failed program. And it's costing the government a lot of money, so, and, and hurting people's ability to get care.
What did I read today, they're finally auditing all those programs now, it's that one thing that came out of the big piece. Auditing those.
Sorry. I remember all the way back, uh, last year, we, we just went to DC, it was, I mean, all the legislators knew about this and had heard a lot about the problem, so it's.
Do we need to discuss the transfer fund at this juncture meeting or?
I didn't, I saw it late.
New business.
Okay, we'll come back to that then, all right? So, thank you, Jennifer, uh, moving on, we have, uh, uh, Chief, uh, Public Relations, Michelle, are you there? There you are.
I am, I am here and I don't have the draft on tonight behind you, um, so I apologize for the. Um, so I apologize for the late handout, um, that I'm just noticing a nice misspelling on, you can see what I'm trying to do, so I apologize for that too on the top. That's what happens when I don't let, give Mandy a chance to review it.
You're just testing us, I get it.
I am, I am. Um, so, uh, a- as you can imagine, most of our time over the last couple of weeks has been spent on putting together information on the levy education. Um, we've got the education points out, we've got some do's and don'ts, those were handed out, uh, with some of your material today. Crystal, who I believe, um, is, is not still there, was there earlier, she's taking it upon herself to virtually, uh, communicate with every department and clinic uh, within the organization, I think there are forty-two, so she's been going around doing, um, education sessions for everyone, doing an absolute fabulous job. And just because of all of this, that's why you got your late report, I apologize. Um, one thing that I wanted to mention in there, um, another part of, uh, Crystal's work is the strategic funding, and we did recently hear, um, I'm, I'm not sure if we've recorded to you or not, um, on the most recent state budget that was passed, we have just over six hundred thousand dollars, it's been awarded to us for the surgical surges, services complex remodel, remodel, so what we were just talking about there with the ortho and gen surgery. Um, so we're very thankful for that, and representative, Representative Yabara's assistance on that. And we were also contacted last week by Senator Patty Murray's office, and, uh, she wanted to let us know that we are in consideration for, um, some appropriations funds. Uh, I have some numbers that are floating around that are pretty exciting, but it's not final. Again, that was a, uh, application that Crystal put in to help with the expansion project. Um, so we should, uh, as they, as that moves through appropriations, we should have some final numbers for you, but we're excited, and we continue to explore more funding opportunities. Other than that, uh, I'd be happy to take any questions if you've had a chance to review the report.
Yeah, Crystal's rounding with every department, she was, would you say forty-three, forty-six, and just a really exceptional presentation on, um, the levy, uh, reasons for running it, and just even on how to speak with their friends, family, neighbors as it comes up, and she's just really shout out to Michelle's whole team for, for all the work they're doing, rather quickly get all this material together, it's been fun.
It has been fun, I, I, I call myself the B-team, I've been able to go to a couple, um, and I told Crystal, I'm getting a complex, they're not laughing and nearly as engaged when it's me, so.
Yeah, she is.
Yeah, she is good.
Um, so you have a note about the expansion, open house, June eleventh, and then you say note, note the date change, so the eleventh is the correct date, it used to be something else?
Yes, it was the tenth.
Okay.
Um, we had an internal conflict on that, so that's moved to June eleventh.
Any other comments for us?
Nothing for me.
Pretty cool, I'm not flaring, that is Crystal's family, and, um, Crystal's, that's Crystal's mom, and she was born, and Crystal was born here, right?
Yeah, so, uh, Crystal was born here, and two of her six children were born here, the only reason the other four were not is because she was in Hawaii. Um, and so we're working, uh, she, she was one of the first families that stepped up, but we have other families within the organization, whether or not, um, like, uh, that have multiple members of the family working here. And so we're working on getting some of those stories and some of those pictures, and just really moving a lot of our marketing and education materials to real faces, people that, uh, the community recognizes, and just making that switch.
Really love that having recognizable faces, um, on our publications and such, it's a great idea.
Excellent, uh, any other questions for Michelle?
The, the people seem to be enjoying it too, they can get their pictures taken, and be like a little piece to show off the rep theater to talk about video a little bit, and be recognized. And so it's been fun, do we provide them with a high-quality copy they can make a print from?
Yes. Yes.
I'd like to point out that even in the background of this picture, there's no doubt that that's Ellensburg, if you can see the trees, missing branches on one side.
That's on the river, too.
They were trying for a couple weeks to, for a day with no wind, and finally, it's like, we've got to get this material out, so we're dealing with it.
It's a great picture.
Excellent, all right, thank you, if there's nothing else, appreciate it.
Okay.
Right, thank you, Michelle, moving on, we are to, uh, well, we're at the, the juncture where people who are giving their reports and have family at two and stuff, we can take a couple minutes, anybody wants to call it a day, and then we'll go on to some board reports and some old and new business, and so it's totally, if anybody wants to head out, feel free at this time.
You want to take, uh, like two, three minutes?
Let's take a three-minute.
I did want to hang on to Rhonda.
Three-minute pause.
Next session.
Yeah, so it's six thirty-eight, we'll start up again, just a casual break.
Thank you.
Speak for itself.
See, what do you ask them?
I just wonder. Good.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
And it's so lovely out there in Little Rock, indeed, so, I know, I enjoy this weather, the sunlight. It's gonna be great.
I think it is forecast.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be eighty-seven, I think, on Sunday.
How's it going, Dr. Carlson?
Doing quite well, how are you doing?
Fantastic. I'm, uh, a little bit intimidated about this eighty-seven degree temperature forecast for Sunday.
Intimidated, bring it on.
Gonna be out gardening, so I have to bring my, uh, gardening hat.
Do, uh, did you get that thing I sent to you?
I did. I did, thank you very much.
That's, I got good people running against me, and I think they all hates me now.
Should be, should be good.
I, I'd be more than happy to chat with you when we're not being recorded on live video.
Okay, that will be recorded then.
Sounds wonderful. Much appreciated.
I hope that's not catching.
I gave up coffee lots of all the, oh, tonight, and so I'm already like, well.
I never give you coffee.
I think that's a fabulous, uh, you should make sure the pharmacy is part of that team, that there's no question. Still do, and, and with, with that, the pharmacy, well, it's, yeah, much more of a mess.
Definitely.
You know how emergency doctors are.
All right, let's go ahead and start getting, settling our seats.
Like fifty-fifth.
So, uh, next up is, uh, education and board reports, and I just had wanted to add real quick, um, for board travel, uh, we have the Nashville Leadership Summit in July, and, um, I've been debating whether or not to maybe go to that, they have a lot of stuff on AI, and I have an interest in that. Um, but I have like two weeks before the, uh, the early bird deadline, so what I wanted to was just get permission from the board to possibly go to that, and if not that, um, we're talking about one in September, uh, in DC and advocacy day, so it would be one or the other, so what I was looking for, if, uh, the majority of the board felt it was appropriate, at least give me permission to choose one or zero of those to go to either in July or September, just cause I can't decide yet tonight, but I don't want to wait for the next board meeting, so we lose the early bird window if I decide to go to Tennessee, so. Um, I don't know how we do a motion, cause I don't, I don't do motions, but.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, to approve you're going to one or the other.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I'll second it.
Second, okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 I two vote aye, that, that motion passes, does anyone else have any travel or board report things?
Can you borrow his computers, you can take that kind of notes.
If you don't have that skillset, it's amazing how quick you can take, my brain starts, I can only hear what they're saying if I'm trying to type that quick.
I don't know why you all are going, you can just look at his notes.
But I look forward to learning about what you find, so interested in AI, not enough to get on a plane, but I'm glad you are, so.
Thank you, it's a curse.
And what's that? Um, just a note to you, I was able to get a DOH grant, and to pay for three other of the staff to go to, so Jennifer's gonna go, and Janine and Tab are all three, very likely to go there as well, so you guys will have, may as well get your own private plane.
Yeah, private plane, yeah.
So listen to some music.
Um, anything else for, uh, board reports, right, hearing none, moving on, old business, um, we added, uh, during the amended a- agenda, the CEO review, Bob and I completed the CEO review, we met with Jason and, uh, Janine and the senior leadership in this last month or so, so we just wanted to confirm that we had finished that report. Reflected very well on Jason, we're very, uh, happy with where he's at in his, uh, career as a CEO, and I think he's got a lot of support from senior leadership and from the board, so we have created the document to reflect those facts, Bob and I will sign it, uh, as soon as it's available, and just put it officially into his record to conclude the ninety-day assessment of the CEO work, so.
And you'll share it with the rest of the board?
Yeah, well, uh, we'll, to you guys, so you have a copy of that, so, so that was. Uh, anyone else have any comments on CEO, uh, annual review or night and day reviews?
Thank you all for taking the time to do it.
Yeah, it's a very, a good learning experience for everybody, so appreciate that. All right, so moving on to number nine, new business, intergovernmental pass-through of KBF, KBH Foundation donation, Jason, you want to take that one?
Yeah, that one, I think most are aware of kind of the backstory on this donation that came from Hospital District Two, buying a lot of land from a neighboring property there, and in part of that deal, the, uh, seller would donate back two hundred thousand dollars to, to Upper County Services, which District Two has a foundation, so it went to the KBH Foundation, and this is authorization for us to do a pass-through, so that, cause the foundation is only connected to Hospital District One, so the foundation will distribute the funds to Hospital District One, District One will do a intergovernmental pass-through to Hospital District Two to use those funds for what they would like to use them for, what they would like to use it for is towards an ambulance. Um, and then they did talk about that donation with the family that donated it, and they'll have a generously donated by the Dr. Hugh, in remembrance of Dr. Hugh Adams decal on the, so that is, they would like to request those funds to go to. And then we put it in here just because we previously requested for those funds to go towards improvements in the old church there that's next door to be able to move physical therapy into there, so that project is scrapped, so this just recognizes both of those changes.
And, uh, I apologize for Mandy for contacting her at home saying, I think you have the wrong page in the board packet, because it had Ju- Julie and Ron listed as, uh, participants in this event, but then you made it clear that's why we're doing it, cause we're taking an old approval and moving it to a new approval, so. Uh, any questions for Jason about what we're trying to do? Yeah, and do you want a motion?
Yes.
I'll do.
Do you have a motion from Erica? From Bob, any further discussion? All in favor of transferring the funds, say aye.
Aye.
I two vote aye, that motion passes. Uh, moving on to community listening session.
Yeah, so this has come out of to start planning for the levy and just new leadership and things going on in the community, just an opportunity for the, the community to come and have discussion with some leaders and the board, is my vision of this, so it'll be just kind of no agenda, but we can talk about just general things going on at KBH, including the levy. Um, I wanted to request, uh, both, uh, John and Bob to represent the board, um, it could be somebody else or, or even to have a, a contingent person as well, and then I was gonna request for the staff, for me and the council to join that panel.
Okay, and it would be mostly just a question and answer, we invite people to come if they have questions, we would do us to provide answers.
Yep, and what I would envision is a, a health homes type of event.
Do we have anticipation whether this would be a weekday or a weekend day or evening or?
Probably a weekday, and probably later part of the day is what I envisioned.
I'd be interested in being the alternate if.
Yeah, alternate.
If he'd happen as an alternate.
Yep, and Bob, are you comfortable taking a primary position if it fits your schedule?
Yeah, you bet, okay, it'd be fun.
So, uh, Eric is expressed interested in being an alter, anybody else like to throw their hat and ring for being an alternate, or we?
Show me second alternate.
Second alternate?
Uh, I've already been discussing people, uh, to vote for the levy.
Yep.
Uh, because, uh, they've been talking a lot about voting that I know about, and I've told them on the general, uh, say, is that the general election or primary where the, the levy will be voted on?
Um, it'll be on the primary.
Yeah, it'll be the primary, okay, cause I told them there'd be a levy that would be, uh, voted on, and it'll, uh, from the hospital, we get a few more buckaroos, uh, and then I also talked to them about how much they get in the Upper County Hospital District Two, and we don't get that, uh, much here, but we needed to increase it a little bit, and, uh, but, uh, cause they've been talking about voting, uh, uh, to me a lot, and, uh, uh, if I, if you need somebody else to talk about a levy voting to anybody, uh, I'd be willing to do it also.
This is for education though, not to necessarily tell people to vote.
Yes, this is just education.
And it could be anything, like the hospital.
Not even just the levy education.
Yeah, and we have talked about maybe doing these a couple times a year, so open forum listening session.
I'd be curious to see who attends, that would kind of inform us as to how often we should do it.
When I've been talking to them, I've been educating them, and telling them why they should vote for it, uh, because, uh, I think my education was, was good with them, but, uh, anyway.
Yep, and we'll have a website up real soon with a lot more information and some testimonials and videos and stuff of staff and community members, so really excited to get our webpage up on it.
Um, is it possible to even put up, put together a voter pamphlet that would go out to them, uh, when they, uh, vote for things? Uh, the normal voter pamphlet will go out, and then there will be a mailing as well.
Okay, yes. So for this particular event, you've informed us, do you need any sort of motion, or are you just content just having this informal discussion?
Um, should we have a motion?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we do have a statement, um, to put into the, do on the twenty-seventh.
It's in.
Cool.
Did you do it?
Oh.
Yep. Did you write it? No.
It was a group away from work.
Yes, that's right.
All right, uh, moving on, uh, new business, we added number, uh, letter C, so I, I've just been informed that the, uh, Wisha Governance Position, Terry currently represents, his three-year term is coming to an end this fall, so I just want to begin the discussion of, uh, of the other commissioners to kind of rotate through who, uh, might be interested in that position, we don't have to decide tonight, we have a couple of months, but I just wanted to put it out there that this is occurring, so we should just be thinking about who might be interested in, uh, doing a term.
But as I under, as I understand it, though, it's not, it's not like there's a slot for KBH, isn't it just up to Wisha who's gonna be on that committee?
Yeah, they, uh, they love people that are in the teams, so I, I imagine they would, they have a representative, if we have one, but then we don't have to have one.
So it doesn't sound like Matt's volunteering.
I've talked to, I, I mean, I've talked to the volunteer coordinator, Wisha, and, um, I'd be happy to do it, but I only have two years left of my term, but, uh, it's, uh, it was a little unclear what the process was, but I'll leave it at that.
Well, again, we don't have to decide tonight, it's more just this, this might be an opening and, uh, if they'll have us, I think. This might be an opening and, uh, if they'll have us. I think it's good for us to have some representation there. So.
But when I was at the governance, uh, committee, uh, back when, uh, uh, you and I think it was you and Matt that went. It did the, the stuff to, uh, senators.
Yeah.
I was at the governance committee, um, they, uh, were talking about. The, the commissioners that were on the governance committee, because we also have some CEOs that go to that governance committee too. And, uh. I did say that, uh, I had to get re-elected this year and they told me, uh, that they hoped I did. But I said, if I didn't, uh, I would like to have one of the other commissioners to be here. And they said, yes, they would, because, uh, they like to have, uh, people from every, uh, every, uh, uh, hospital area. So to be on the governance committee, because, uh, it increases the amount of governments. And then the other thing is, uh, if you do, if you're on the governance committee, it's almost an educational thing too. Uh, because, uh, uh, they talk so much about governments, uh, and it's going to be really good. And then in June, uh, when we go up to Shalan, uh, the governance committee will be up there also. And, uh, since I'm going to be at that meeting up there, uh, I also can go to that, that gu- that governance committee. Uh, and then the other thing they do, if, uh, they have a governance committee and you don't want to be in that area. They always set it up as a Zoom. So you could, uh, anybody could be, uh, on that, uh, on that governance and, and be associated with Wisha. Uh, and you would only have to be able to zoom in and, uh, they do that, uh, really good. Uh, but then one thing they do when they're, they have a Zoom, uh, they, uh, ask people to bring. A laptop in and turn it on to the Zoom and make sure that nothing, uh, nothing, uh. Makes any sound or anything like that. So that way everybody on the Zoom can actually see your face and hear you talk. Uh, they know exactly who you are, even though they put your name on, in front of you here. It's hard to see that in, in a Zoom meeting. Hello, you people on the Zoom meeting.
Sounds, yeah, I mean, Terry, it sounds like good work.
Yeah, I think we're good. I think we understand. Um, anything else? Any other comments on, uh, in this section? So hearing none, uh, it is six fifty-two. So why don't we take an eight-minute break? And then we'll resume at seven PM for executive session. We have real estate and, uh, personnel. And how long do we need for real estate portion?
Fifteen minutes.
And I'll add ten for personnel. So a total of twenty-five. So we have a twenty-five minute executive session unless you hear otherwise. So, uh, we are recessed until executive session.
Selecting action.
Thank you very much. Uh, and we expect a vote to be taken at the end. Yes.
Thank you.
Testing you, you passed. All right, resume at seven o'clock, executive session. Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.